See you over there cowboy.
How you doing?
Thank you.
Just so you know, you're live.
We're live.
Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Board of Selectmen's meeting dated December 19th, 2023 at 6:08. We will start the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Welcome, everybody, to this evening's meeting. We will start with citizens' input. If anybody has any concerns out there and would like to ask any questions or bring anything up about what's on tonight's agenda, please feel free to do so.
No hands?
No hands, nobody in here. Full board meeting tonight. The interim town administrator has an excused absence tonight, was unable to make this evening's meeting. So we are going to move on to administration, and we will start with the municipal bridge payment. So we received, I was talking with Mr. Povero, and Mike and Trish have been putting in to get grants left and right to help out with the various things for our highway department. And lately, we started to receive some grants for municipal bridge payments. So we received this one in, and Joe's gonna read so we can accept some money in and take it. And then you will also see FYI to everybody that's out there, also talking with Mr. Povero, that there will be a town warrant that's gonna be put out because we need to set up a capital revolving fund so that we can start putting these funds into it, so that Michael will have access to it to be able to use it when he needs to do bridge work and the culverts and all of that. And he'll be able to access it easily because that money that comes in is strictly for that, those purposes only, not roadwork, but that of bridge work and culverts and of that nature. With that all being said, Joe?
Yes, I acknowledge the receipt of a one-time payment from New Hampshire DOT Bridge Payment in the amount of $18,479.46, received December 2, 2023. Public hearing is required and will be posted for January 2, 2024.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Guide. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Joe. And now we're gonna move on, food pantry donations. We have had a lot of wonderful people who have stepped up and made large donations at this time, a lot of people that are in need and hurting with everything that's taking place and with inflation and all of that, that people need a lending hand, which is nice. So, Joe, if you would be so kind?
Yeah, with that said, I would like to acknowledge the generous donations to the Newton Food Pantry of $100 from Lee and Lawrence Zurich Jr., $200 gift certificate card donation from Sue Davidson, and $500 gift card donation from an anonymous donor. I would also like to recognize the $100 donation from Jack and Madeline Kozak.
Second.
Seconded by Dan. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And once again, the board would like to, with a great deal of gratitude, thank all these people for stepping up and taking care of all their brothers and sisters in this town with those donations. Tonight, because our interim town administrator is not here, we're not going to go over the warrant articles because he's not able to be here. He was doing some updating on them so that we could go over them. That being said, we're going to move on to budgets.
Let me just, before you leave the warrant articles, let's just get a reminder of the calendar for everybody. So our next meeting is January 2. We are marching towards a date, you know, kind of the final due date is what, it always escapes me.
The 13th goes to press.
13, it goes to press, so to speak, because we have the, is the public hearing the 15th?
Yep.
Yeah. So we have the public hearing on the 15th. So in terms of the warrant articles, we think we have most of it into focus, but if there's anything else we need, the absolute drop dead date is gonna be the morning of January 2 because it's gotta get in, and we have to review it and finally sign off on it on that last meeting. There won't be any other meetings between now and January 2.
So we wanted it in for the 29th we were talking about, right?
Yeah, the 29th is really...
Would be the Friday before.
The typical schedule, right? Where Robin has to have it early, but, you know, 9:00 AM probably on Tuesday, January 2 would be, you know, the really hard stop that we could deal with, so.
I'd just like to ask that if anybody's having trouble putting things together and not gonna make that deadline, that it is communicated by the 26th to the town administrator so that he can gather resources to help those that may not be able to get all the details that are needed.
Yeah, and it's the same thing with the budget, right?
Budget as well.
Similar timeline, similar thing as we, we're in pretty good shape, I would have to say, as I've sat up here for a few years now, but we just wanna get the final touches on it so we're not chasing things too late in the calendar.
So I have a question probably for Robin, maybe Diane. Does the petition warrant article for the boat launch thing, do you know if those have been submitted yet? Like if they have actually gotten the signatures? I mean, we anticipated they did, but I don't know if we've actually received it yet.
I think REC got the signatures, and then I don't really know what happened after.
Okay.
It's in process.
Okay, that's fine. I was just interested to know how that was playing out.
Yeah, I think Robin's right. I think she turned it in with the signatures. It wasn't a case of...
Oh, I thought when Pat was here, she said it was going to happen.
Yeah.
But I didn't think she actually did it at that time.
It's worth the minutes to put that in the minutes to make sure.
Okay.
Okay, anything else? That being said, we're gonna move on to the budget. And one thing that did come in on the budget was that Trish McCaffey had upgraded her pay schedule in there for the emergency EMD. And what was the other one? For conservation, I think was upgraded also, Robin?
Yes, and her, the people that help her in emergency management.
Okay, right. Thank you. So that was the only thing that I'm aware of that came in that upgraded after we had already gone through the budget and looked at it and done what we've had to do to it to try to reduce it and bring it in line.
I do believe Rich Kane would like to speak.
Chief Kane?
Yes.
I guess I just need to clarify something. After the last meeting, you folks reminded the justification for the raises.
Yep.
I presented that to Jim. I don't know if it's ever reached your desk or not.
Yep.
It has? So you guys have all my material that I wanted to put in?
Yep.
That's all I need to know? If you have that, I'm happy to...
Nope, yep, we appreciate it.
Very good, thank you.
Yep. Not only that, but I believe that you, the first time you came up to the mic, you articulated it very well about how you came about doing it in reference to the towns and where in line we sat for pay and all of that. So we appreciate all your hard work.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you. Anybody else? Nope. All right, so that takes care of the budget as far as we're concerned for today. We're gonna move on to approvals, transfer for emergency management. So Robin, that if remembering correctly, we needed, the townspeople approved to close out one account to open up another account so that Tricia McCaffey would be able to access the funds to be able to use them for the emergency management when she needed them, whether she, if she had to open up the shelter or whatnot during a storm like we had yesterday, or in such cases, she was not able to do that. So with the funds that she had received, the town had approved it, but somewhere along the line, there was a hiccup, and then that other fund was never opened. So we had that fund did get opened?
Yes, and that's the fund that she will be depositing the check into.
And we're looking to place said money into that fund now. And with that being said, Joe?
Yes, I moved to authorize the bookkeeper to create a check for Newton General Fund to the treasurer for $219,319.74, and to further instruct the treasurer to deposit the check into the Emergency Management Operating Revolving Fund ending in 3025.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Borrow.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's unanimous. And once again, we're just simply doing what the townspeople had approved, we're taking it from that fund and putting it in the appropriate fund at this point.
Just to clarify, so that people don't think that the EMD can actually go to the bank and take money out, they can request money to be taken out, but it is the board's responsibility to disperse those payments, okay? The way you're saying it, it sounds like she can go and get the money.
No, it's for her purpose to be able to use it for...
Just so people out there know that it's still the board that's responsible.
Right, yeah, like all the other departments, when it's over the said $3,000 barrier, if she needs money for something, she has to come to the select board to get it approved.
Basically, it's the select board's duty.
Right.
Because it's upper reserve fund.
Yep. Fire Department encumber funds.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good to see everybody. We submitted four requisitions. One requisition is the funds to come out of the ambulance revolving account. The other three, priority one, priority two, priority three, if there were any funds left in the fire department budget, we would respectfully ask to have those approved in that order. The email I sent said number one, number two, number three on it.
And one of them was for radios?
Correct. One is radios, one is for two sets of gear, and the officers put in for a training prop, which was the, I think, the $8,000 one.
Okay, just so everybody out there knows.
And that's how the order went, I believe, radios, gear. Just in case we go into a default budget, if we had funds left over this year, it would help, especially if we go to default.
Right. So what will be just to look at what account we can take it from to pay for them?
Like I said, again, if there was the account that I was hoping to take it from, unfortunately, was used up, I think the only line that has funds is the grant match line. I know we turned in some invoices today, some vehicle repairs, and the ambulance, I don't know, I didn't send it out to the board because it's a quick fix, it's out of service again. But that should be a few hundred dollars to fix, it's just batteries.
Oh, okay.
Is what we were told.
Should we be encumbering stuff when we don't know how much money is in that account?
Typically, we've done them just as they're written in our proposed motion, so the money's gonna be there, in other words, in the motion, so essentially, we, if it comes down to whatever date at, you know, 5:00 PM, and there's no money there, then it won't happen, so. Are you saying in terms of, like, tonight, you'd like to have a...
We don't know how much money is in there, and we're gonna do this? That's my question.
The motions specifically state providing the funds.
What has also been done in the past, the board has authorized it with a stipulation that there's money in the budget. If there's no money in the budget at the end of the fiscal year, then there is no incumbent funds.
So I think what Mr. Guide is asking is, what is currently in the budget right now as we sit here tonight in the line items these would come out of?
Extremely trick question. I just received, I don't have an exact up-to-date. I do know as of Friday, we had, we've used 91% of the fire department's budget for fiscal 23.
And that's...
And like I said, if it doesn't happen, it doesn't happen, I'm just kinda looking into the future, that's all.
And that's why you're kinda saying they're in order of priority one, two, and three?
Correct.
Yeah.
The only one that was a definite is the fourth one that came from the deputy, which that's coming out of the ambulance revolving account, which has, I think, 40-something thousand dollars in it, so that one is an easy one.
So it is, it is a good point, and perhaps if Jim was here, Jim would have had that to pull out to show us. So we could always do the motions and put in some sort of stipulation that...
It says it.
It's listed in the motions.
Well, no, not that stipulation, other stipulation that, you know, today is Tuesday, maybe by Wednesday or Thursday, the bookkeeper could email us what the current amounts are so if we had any particular heartburn.
So I do believe that you got the amounts, right? And then she asked you to deduct what bills you had outstanding, and she asked you to do an accounting.
Correct, but today, there's a whole stack of bills.
Yeah, so I think if you put that, she's still not gonna know because he has to come up with the answer.
Right, so in other words, you could, you could give us the, we could put these motions through tonight.
Subject to...
Subject to if you have by, you know, Thursday or whatever, you can email us what the final accounting is, and then if any of us has any particular heartburn about it, can ask the chairman to put something on the calendar to discuss further. But it sounds like from what the chief is saying, you know, the belief is the money is going to be there, you just don't have an exact number.
Correct. What I explained to paint was, in the past, when we've done incumbent, we never put where it came out of. It was always on the bottom dollar. There was, like last year, there was $18,000 left in the budget, and that night, the board voted to incumbent $8,000. It was never the specific line, it's always been based on the end, because the board's gonna do a specific line, I can stand up here and tell you, it's not gonna happen.
Yeah, and I...
I wasn't looking for a specific line.
Yeah, I don't think we're looking for a specific line, and you make a good point for those watching at home, is the board is not beholden to specific line. We've talked about it in here before, is we have a bottom line for the whole town, whatever the budget was, so that's when we encumber. We, if we wanted to, when we encumber, we can look across the whole leftover town budget, so.
We're just doing our due diligence, just in case for next year.
Yep. You good with that, Dan?
Yep.
Joe?
Okay, so Fire Department encumbered funds, one, number 1074, Firehouse Innovations. I move to encumber $9,750 to come out of the 223 Fire Department budget, number 42203, to pay for multi-force door trainee prop, provided the funds are available at year end.
Second.
Seconded by Dan. All in favor?
Aye.
That's unanimous.
Number 1075, Firemanic Supply. I move to encumber $7,280 to come out of the 223 Fire Department budget, line number 42203, to pay for two tailcoats, two LTO pants with harnesses, and two firemen's ladder hook with twist locks. Prices are per state bid, provided the funds are available year end.
Second.
Seconded by Dan. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's unanimous.
Number 1076, Belltronics. I move to encumber $8,725.08 to come out of 2023 Fire Department budget, line number 42203, to purchase equipment, including batteries, charges, and other related equipment, provided the funds are available at year end.
Second.
Seconded by Dan. All in favor?
Aye.
That's unanimous.
Firework requisition number 1073. I move to approve requisition number 1073 FD to board to Bound Tree Medical in the amount of $2,350 to purchase safrine multi-therapy infusion pump kit, which is required for the ambulance for New Hampshire State Protocol. Funds to be drawn from the revolving ambulance account.
Second.
Seconded by Dan. All in favor?
Aye.
That's unanimous. Thank you, chief.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Is that four?
So we just did fire requisition 1073 also. I'm gonna let Selectman Simone, Simone talk about tree disposal at Terex because he's been on the front line with this one. Joe?
Yes, last Friday afternoon, I received an email from Nicole Bowman. She's one of the managers over at Terex over on Woody Street, and she's asking me about what the town has in place for disposal of Christmas trees. I told her, to the best of my knowledge, there wasn't anything in place other than the fact that people brought their trees to the transfer station. So she was wondering if they could, if we could work with them somehow to have a collection point, say, at their facility, so they could, they would properly dispose of the trees, they would, I guess they use them to test their equipment, they grind them, and they also, and they also burn the pulp in their burner for heating in the building. I've been trying to reach out for her for the past couple days, and yesterday, we had a weather situation, today she was off, so hopefully I can reach her tomorrow, and we can finalize what we need to do, and it won't be at any cost to the town, we'll be just probably putting a notice on our website.
So I was reading, I read her email. It looks like we could still, I mean, you just make a pile at the transfer station, and they can come pick them up, you know what I mean?
We could possibly do that, yep.
I almost think that would be easier than having them go somewhere else, because most people are going to the transfer station anyways. I mean, I don't, it doesn't really matter, but if we just make a pile at the transfer station...
Yeah, because we'd have to, we'd end up, we'd end up grinding them anyway, burning them solid.
If we make a pile and be like, hey, there, take a pile there, come get them.
So the only thing is, and Dan will love this, but if they're gonna be doing this at the transfer station, we're gonna have to take the normal steps we would do if we had a vendor come on town property with all the insurance binders and all that stuff, so.
I'm sure they haven't anyways.
I would think they would, but we'll have to ask for all of that.
Sure.
If we wanted to, you know, avoid all that paperwork, if people went to Terex, it'd be a no-brainer.
What I mean, it's just the insurance binder that they already have, so it's not, shouldn't be a big deal. They deliver equipment constantly, it's no different.
Yeah. But it sounds good to me.
Cool, sounds good to me, too.
All right, very good. Insurance buyout policy amendment. So it's come to the board's attention that Peyton, who's been doing our payroll and financial record-keeping for the town of Newton now for, what, a year?
About a year.
Has made a suggestion to the board about the insurance buyout policy that what we've been doing is, so if somebody leaves or somebody retires, we've been waiting to the, throughout the whole year, get to the end of the year, to reimburse or buy out these people, like I said, that have retired, that have quit or left for one reason or another, which creates quite a bit of havoc, I guess, for bookkeeping. So her suggestion is that what we do is do it in a timely manner and do it month to month, which just cleans it up and makes it a lot more viable, bookkeeping-wise. So with that being said, I don't know if any of you gentlemen have any, any concerns with it, but I think most of us see this as a level-headed move in the right direction to do what Peyton suggested. So with that said, Joe?
Yes, currently, current policy states insurance buyout will be paid in the month of December to qualifying employees. The bookkeeper suggests moving the buyout policy to a monthly schedule to improve the process.
So with that being said, I'm going to ask for a motion to approve the suggestion by the bookkeeper?
I have one thing. So it's gonna be bimonthly, because it's gonna be twice, because it's per pay period, not monthly.
So it's every pay period?
Yeah, so twice a month.
Pay period?
Yeah.
So we should amend that to say each pay period?
Yeah.
So then...
So that's what the motion will read, per pay period?
Yep. Oh, okay, I thought I just read the motion. Okay, so make a motion to, to accept Peyton's, Peyton's suggestion that we do the buyout process on each paycheck period so the bookkeeping process is a little more seamless.
So you're gonna amend the policy?
That we're going to amend the policy.
Okay, that too, yes.
So that it'll be paid out...
Each pay period?
Yeah. On, yeah, on a paid...
Each pay period.
Purpose, correct.
Second.
Seconded by Dan. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So the policy has just been changed. We can let Peyton know that, please?
Yep.
Thank you. Next, manifest.
I move to withdraw in the amount of $5,764 from the Cable Committee revolving account for an invoice to Ramone Networks.
Second.
Seconded by Dan. All in favor?
Aye.
That's unanimous.
I move to approve withdrawal in the amount of $1,391.45 from the Police Special Detail account for an invoice to Wex Bank.
Second.
Seconded by Matt. All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous?
I move to approve a withdrawal in the amount of $111.98 from the Emergency Management checking account for reimbursement payment made to Patricia McCaffey.
Second.
Seconded by Matt. All in favor?
Aye.
I move to, I move to approve withdrawal in the amount of $107 from the Uniform Fire Watch for an invoice made payable to East Coast Emergency Outfitters.
Second.
Seconded by Dan. All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous?
I move to approve a withdrawal in the amount of $402 from the Recreation Revolving account for an invoice made payable to Duke State Line Store for catering services.
Second.
Seconded by Dan. All in favor?
Aye.
I move to approve vendor manifest in the amount of $82,751.25 with a pay date of December 19, 2023. Payment to include $28,821.12 to Gmail Disposal Corp. and $18,172.44 to Ford Motor Company.
Second.
Seconded by Dan. All in favor?
Aye.
I move to approve vendor manifest in the amount of $104,245.63 with a pay date of December 19, 2023. Payment to include a check made to the Newton Treasurer to deposit into the Highway Block Grant Account.
Second.
Seconded by Dan. All in favor?
Aye.
I move to approve payroll manifest in the amount of $71,948.19 for pay period December 3 through the 16th, with the pay date of December 21, 2023. The manifest includes $278.34 in offer administrative costs.
Second.
Seconded by Dan. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Minutes, Joe?
I move to approve and accept the public meeting minutes dated November 29, 2023, as written.
Second.
Seconded by Dan. All in favor?
Aye.
And just to backtrack real quick, so we want to make sure that that, the amendment for the, the insurance buyout policy, we want to make sure that that gets put into, so if anybody bothers and wants to look it up, that it will be put in the policy when they do pull it up, please?
Yeah.
So, between you and Jim, we're going to make sure that gets taken care of, please?
Okay.
Thank you. New and old business.
I have one thing that the last, end of our last non-public meeting, we made a motion to commission a study group to assist in developing a comprehensive study about the town hall and the Gail Library outline any deficiency, needs, or code issues to be used to develop a future strategy for municipal complex to include both the town hall and library, funding to come from the Town Building Trust Fund.
Yeah.
Yeah, I guess, I guess translated is...
Translated is.
Is we, we discussed at the last meeting about a Warren article proposed, then pulling the Warren article, and what, what we decided in the public portion of the last meeting, but it was after the non-public, so we weren't on TV, was that we would stand up that committee as soon as possible. So, this is to get the word out, if there's anybody out there in our millions of viewers that would like to get involved, and this is, this is a study group, right, to have the initial discussions about, we know these buildings will have to be replaced, but, you know, what's kind of the punch list, or what's the priority? And the way we've done these things in the past is kind of the best scenario is to get a good cross-section of the town involved. Not us, right? We're, we're going to have the commission do stuff and report back, but if you've got construction experience, or even if you don't have construction experience, but maybe you have historical knowledge, or you just want to get involved, this is a good opportunity. So, I think we should take that, if we haven't already, and put it on the website, so it goes, gets emailed out to everybody if they're interested, reply back by this...
Yeah, I think Joe was also concerned that we needed to make a motion to approve making the committee.
Yeah, I think we did that already. It was in the minutes, right, the public minutes?
That's what I thought.
Yeah. So, I think, I think we're okay in, as far as the administrative thing goes, so we should see how many names we get in, and then hopefully, we can pick a date for people to get together, you know, for the first meeting.
It would be nice to see some fresh blood...
Oh, yeah.
Coming in.
Yeah.
See what I could do, I could more or less oversee that for the time being and get people together when the time comes for a meeting and whatnot, so.
Sure.
Poor Joe. Joe's on every committee and every commission, and how is your wife watching?
Joe, you had something to say about the 275?
Yes, just wanted to, excuse me, just wanted to give a little bit of an update. Since we met last, we had our first function, we had a community gathering last, last Saturday at the Just Church Community Center, actually, the Horace Williams Community Center, and it worked out pretty good. Santa Claus was there, we probably had maybe 50 to 70, 75 people come through during the course of the day, and it was very nice, it was very nice to see a lot of new faces out there, especially some of the young folks. Our next function is going to be scheduled for January, I want to say it's the 25th, it's the last Thursday of the month at the, at the hen house, where we'll be doing a 50/50 raffle and a few other things we have.
And we would also like to say thank you very much to the Just Church, because they put on a nice little spread of some food for all the people who came there, and the fact that they've been very supportive and getting quite active with the town and helping out with a lot of these events lately. So, again, we would just like to thank the Just Church for all that they've, they've been doing and everything that they continue to do for us.
And Santa.
And Santa.
Can't forget Santa.
And our friend Santa Claus, yes, indeed.
His elf, yep.
And the elf.
Yeah, he made quite a few trips the other night, too, driving around. And then we want to thank Jack Brats and his family for donating holiday wreaths to town hall to decorate it. That was very nice of him and his family, and again, very appreciative. We love when, when the residents get involved, and it's very heartwarming to see that people do care about this town and that they take their time to acknowledge it and demonstrate it. Anything else?
I have one thing. So, it was just missed in the motion, because I didn't add it, it was an error, so if Joe could just accept Bill Shidinger, his $20 donation to the food pantry, it's on the agenda.
So, we, I'd like to make, move, make a motion to accept Bill Shidinger's generous contribution to the food pantry of $20.
Second.
Thank you.
We'll give it to Mike this time.
That's all right.
All in favor?
Aye.
And that would be unanimous, and thank you. Joe? With that being said, nothing else?
I would like to make a motion to go into a non-public session under RSA 91A32C.
Second.
Seconded by Joe. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So, at this time, we will close the public portion of this meeting. We thank all of you for attending and part of the meeting. With that being said...